Like I always says, long you ask no questions?
Yes.
So we really have a real quiet night tonight. What's happening? It's like it's shaken up to the quiet.
A law of one.
I don't know what happened, but we're probably firm on the floor.
Is that what you do?
I'm in real estate in Southwood.
I got a breakfast box.
What is going on? There's something wrong with someone.
What breakfast box?
She knows it's not like this time.
Anything's gonna work.
No, you can have it.
That's what we do.
I have a good belief.
That's another thing.
I think my mind's a complete tinny.
I expect nothing else.
That's true.
Nope.
No, I'm not.
No, not my thought.
You want me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good.
Okay, cool.
Good evening, this is the September 28th meeting of zoning board of appeals. We have a couple of extensions first off. Turnoff Realty LLC. That's 323 and 331 Main Road, Aquabank. They're asking for an extension to the year from October 8th.
Show move second.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Ms. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. You got that one, Mr. Cuddy? All right? All right, Mr. Danowski's offices sent us an extension for Schwenk Electric. Appeal number 1648. The expiration date is the 13th of October. So they're looking for an extension of one year. We hear motion.
Show move second.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Ms. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, Mr. Cuddy, I'm gonna take you first up this evening. I'd like to tell you a couple of things. You know, we've spoken with council and the board and this is a change of zoning. I think you're before the wrong board. I think you need to go before the town board.
Well, I can understand you saying that, but I don't think that's correct. I think.
Well, then you gotta go for a use variance and you have no.
That's what we're.
Well, then we wanna see, we wanna see experts in the field.
I understand, and that was what attorney said last time, but I also said that I believe that we had a two-pronged approach. One of which was that I was asking the industrial use, which is all of A, the 114 six, says that all other industrial uses are part of A. And I said, that seemed to me to incorporate both B and C, which provide for offices. And I asked them, would make that interpretation? And then I said, I recognize that if did not, we would be back.
You said in the alternative, right? You said that you would apply for a use variance.
Yes, and I said I had applied for use variance and I also had requested an interpretation.
Okay.
Because I thought that A incorporated the other section.
So, Mr. Cuddy, though, if that interpretation was made by the board, then everywhere there is industrial A zoning in the town, this board would be determining that office was also a permitted use.
I understand that.
And so I think that that's an awfully broad determination based upon the fact that the zoning was adopted pursuant to the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan identified, and the secret review, which determined what was appropriate and not appropriate in particular areas. And so I think that asking this board to rezone everything in industrial A to include offices is an awfully broad request, particularly since if the town board wanted to have offices a permitted use to that zoning district, it would have included it just as it did in industrial B and in industrial C. So the fact that it was particularly excluded gives me the impression that it wasn't their desire to have that. And I think that if you were going to interpret the zoning code, given those facts, you would have to conclude that the board declined to include it purposely and that this board couldn't decide otherwise. So I think it would be appropriate in that instance to ask the town board to rezone it and give them your argument, because I think you make a fair argument as to why you think it ought to be included and your client, you know, wants to buy it and use it for that purpose.
Although I disagree, I think that if the board were not to take that position, and appear not to be, then I would ask the board to adjourn this so I can prepare a use variance application, which is the very application that was made in 2011 when the board granted a use variance for a bank and pharmacy at this very same site. So that's what I'm essentially doing, is saying, if you do not accept my argument as definition, then I would ask that you adjourn it to the first meeting, I guess, in November, because it's gonna take me a while to get the very same people back that testified in July of 2011.
So I think, given that, the meeting would need to be re-noticed and posted, because I'm not sure what the posting and the notice said originally.
I don't have a problem doing that, because we're going.
So why not just reapply, because at that point.
No, I did apply once, and I applied for both.
I understood, so then this board could make a determination on the current application as it exists right now.
As to.
Rather than adjourn it, because I think it's not clear to anyone who's, who is maybe interested in the public, what you're asking for.
I think we wrote them the very thing that the building department wrote us. We did say that. I can, I can, if that's what you want.
I mean, it's semantics, really, I, you know, but I think for clarity purposes and for, you know, clarity of the record, it would be appropriate to handle the interpretation since you don't have a record to make a determination on the use variance, but I think the record exists for them to make a determination on the interpretation. So let them make a determination and then, you know, without prejudice to making an application to, for a use variance when you're ready to do.
I'm ready now. I mean, I, I did make.
Well, you don't have your, you don't have your witnesses or anything else.
I know, but you did that.
I understand that, but you made it based upon the app, the information from 2011, and we discussed that last month.
And you said that wasn't sufficient, and I heard that.
Correct, right.
And I said, okay, would you do this? And you said, yes, you should make a determination on interpretation. And having made that, if that's what you're saying to me, I'm asking you to allow me then to go forward with the use application on a different date.
Okay.
And I don't know why.
I don't have a problem with that, though. It's ultimately gonna happen anyway, right?
Yeah, but I.
Or you think it should be reposted even though.
I think it's a new application.
Well, it's not new.
I don't think you can ask alternatively for the relief that you're seeking. And.
I thought we did it properly. I didn't think that we had any problem doing it.
Is it the fee that's the problem? The application fee?
You're asking me to make another application for what I've already done. I can do that, but it just seemed to me that that's just making this applicant go through something he doesn't have to go through. I don't have a problem posting it then. But I did ask for, for both those.
In the past, we know that Peter has, he does, you know, give the alternative.
I understand.
Well, one is an application, the record is gonna be, you come back, correct? I need to issue a decision? So you don't wanna issue a decision about the use variance? Okay. Well, if he's gonna repost it, why don't you just make him file, let him use the application the best I can. Does that cover the $500 cut?
We've already, he's got it.
Does the, does the notice say? So it's both?
What it says on here is exactly what it was published for. It's verbatim, it's completely. I don't think it ever said interpretation. I mean, it's chapter 301, section 114. So we'll discuss it in a moment.
Well, yeah, because he's had it.
All right, so we're just gonna think about it a little bit, discuss it amongst ourselves, and we'll.
I would, let me just understand what you're asking me to do. You want me to submit the same application to the building inspector, asking him for the determination on the use.
You've already done that.
And I did that.
Right.
And you want me to do that again?
So it just, no, I don't, I don't want you to necessarily pay the fee or anything or do the extra work, but what, what I'm after is clarity of record. So I think for our purposes, certainly the property needs to be reposted, the advertisement needs to be republished. And then, so I'm not sure how, how to go about doing that exactly. I think we just figure out that the logistics of it will let you know. I don't think it's a big deal one way or the other, I just wanna make sure. Go to throw.
Yeah, I think if it has to be reposted, there's, there's an actual fee involved to put it in legal notices, so.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Maybe that's something, you know, you could work out.
We're not trying to avoid something.
No, I, I don't think, I know that. I'm not concerned about that. I'm just, I'm just trying to be clear about what the decision is, because they have enough information, I think, to make a determination on the application for interpretation, so I'd like to get that out of the way and then that leave the other, so.
Okay, that's fine.
We'll figure it out.
I understand, okay, I won't go over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Charlie.
So we're just gonna deny your interpretation?
Yeah, well, I'll read it a little bit. We'll, I'll email everyone.
Okay.
Okay, that's fair.
Between now and then to get on to the November, so either way, you can still make November.
Yeah, oh, I don't wanna delay him, his application.
All right, so now you want us to adjourn it?
Oh, okay.
Leave it open?
Yeah.
This is 56.
Determination.
All right.
I think you can, this is what I don't like, is the public hearing doesn't get closed. We're not closing the public hearing.
Public hearing is gonna stay open. But if you repost.
Yeah, okay, fine, we'll talk about it.
Okay. All right, Mr. Cuddy, so we will leave this open, we'll adjourn you for the next meeting, and then we'll have a decision by then as to whether it's, you're gonna have to refile or whatever. We'll talk at overdoing.
Okay.
All right, let's hear motion.
What's the adjourn date?
October.
October 12th?
12th, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that appeal number 2017-050. You adjourn until October 12th.
Second. Okay, Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Ms. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, Mr. Cuddy, we'll be in touch. Thank you kindly. Kim, you wanna read this one again? West Main. Oh, Kim, oh my God. We have to get a Kim here.
No.
No, you're getting a charisma.
Okay, next we'll take appeal number 2017-46 for Zou Kua Feng, 445 West Main Street, Riverhead, for variances to under relief from the provisions of chapter 301, section 222B, where the application represents a change from one pre-existing non-conforming use to another non-conforming use as the applicant wishes to convert a single-family dwelling with a non-conforming apartment to a two-family dwelling.
All right, council, if you have your name and address, then.
Absolutely. My name is Keith Archer. I'm a partner at Harris Bloom &amp; Archer, 445 Broad Hollow Road, Melville, New York, representing the applicant.
You have the floor.
Thank you. The applicant is the owner of the, is the owner of the house at 445, I'm sorry, 445 West Main Street. She bought the house believing, and I've got some prepared remarks that I'll give, believing that it was a two-family, a two-family house. I think she had said that in, in her previous appearance before. So the, the house that's situated on the property is a single-family dwelling with a non-conforming second-floor apartment. The specific request before the board is for a special exception to convert the property from a one, from one non-conforming use to the, or as the substitute non-conforming uses. The, the existing non-conforming use is for the, is for the second-floor apartment, and the request is to convert that non-conforming use to make this a two-family house so that if she likes not to live there, she can rent out the two different, the two different families. The, the house currently has certificate of occupancy for the, for the accessory apartment. And we spoke with the building department, so we know that if this application is rejected, that there may be some additional work that needs to be done in order to come into compliance. And the applicant is, is willing to do that. In fact, she's, she's done a lot. I think we all know the history, there were some summonses issued, there was a lot of cleanup on, the summonses are being worked out in court. I believe the return date is sometime in November. And a lot of it had to do with the number of tenants that were in the house. Right now, the applicant is the only, only person in the house. Nobody else. So since this is a special exception, your statute does have certain standards for the issuance of a special permit. And I think that based upon where the house is located, I think the board's aware of the location, that it backs up to Conic, to Suffolk County, land owned by Suffolk County, it's across the street from Commercial property, and Commercial property is also to the west. And there is a, a single-family home just, just next to it, to the west, but I think that based upon the location and the historic use. I mean, really, what we're doing is that we're converting it, it's almost in name only, since it has the accessory apartment now, it has a C of O, okay? So really, we're just simply kind of transforming it from the single-family home with the accessory apartment to a two-family. So it's more of a change in form than in substance. I mean, that's, that's my view. And I think based upon the history and based upon the location, you know, the board can conclude that, that it comes, it complies with the requirements for a special exception, and I'll, I'll recite a couple of them. That the use won't prevent the orderly and reasonable use of the adjacent properties, the properties in the surrounding area, or impair the, the values, right? And again, commercial across the street, single-family home next door, Suffolk County land adjacent. It won't prevent the orderly and reasonable use of the permitted uses within that, within the PRC district, and neglected to mention, of course, it's in the PRC district, or the adjacent districts. And it won't impair the health, safety, or welfare of any of the residents in the town. Again, this is, this is a use that's been ongoing for some number of years. Granted, there were some, you know, flips, but I think we've, we've gotten those under control, and I think at the end of the day, we're all gonna be happy with the ultimate, with the ultimate part. So with that said, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer any questions board members may have. I know there's a bit of a language barrier, so I'll try and answer any questions that I'm able to.
So it was, it was converted from a two-family home to a three-family home? That's.
Yeah, and we, look, we recognize, we recognize that right now it's a single-family home, and you and I have had this conversation, single-family home with the accessory apartment. It's going to be used if this, what, as this application for two families.
When was the CO issued the accessory apartment?
I have a date, it's 2003. It was approved by the town board, I think in 2002.
By a special permit.
Special permit, by special permit.
So there was, right, so, and then the house was a, when was the house, what's the status of the house in terms of a certificate of occupancy? Is there a letter of pre-existing use on that?
Yeah, no, yeah.
What was the date on that?
You're gonna make me dig.
Sorry.
That I don't have, I apologize.
That's okay.
I don't have that.
But it pre-existed, was built pre-zoning?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And how long was the house vacant for?
I know where you're going, but I don't, I don't.
I'm not going anywhere, I'm just trying to flush out the record.
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Folks in the town think they don't, they have the answer to that.
Okay.
But I, I don't think that that's relevant, because it got the special, we're not claiming three families. We're saying you have a single-family home with an accessory apartment that exists by virtue of a special exception, so it has a C of O, so we're trying to convert one special exception to another special exception. We're not saying that.
So you're saying it was a, a conforming use, which would not lose any rights if it was vacant for any period of time?
Yeah, I know, and I don't think it lost any rights by virtue, because it has the special exception.
Right.
I think whatever additional rights, somebody may have been able to claim, may have been lost.
But then the conversion of the basement to living quarters is the next question. So when you converted that without a permit, did you then lose any non-conforming use or conforming use that had been?
I don't think so, because pre-existing non-conforming assumes that, that legally existing.
Right.
It has to be legally existing. So if that wasn't, if that use wasn't legally exist, you can't claim pre-existing use.
You're saying pre-existing conforming?
Right.
Okay.
Counsel, what section of the code are you using to convert this that you're citing? Because if, if it's, if you're calling it a single-family, I think that's a permitted use in that zone.
That is.
Then I don't see it.
There's a provision that allows the board, it's, it's, it's the zoning board, to substitute one special exception for another.
Well, that's one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use.
To another non-conforming use.
No, I'm sorry.
Via a special exception.
But one is a conforming use.
Right.
Yeah, but the apartment, but the apartment, well, but the apartment is, is non-conforming. I don't think the house has a single-family home lost, lost any. Again, we're, we're not.
So then it was, then it was conforming, because it conforms, it's permitted, it's a permitted use in the PRC.
But not the apartment.
Yeah, but you're claiming it to be a single-family residence. That becomes a conforming use. If the apartment is allowed in that district, is it legally allowed in that district as far as the rental apartment law?
I don't have the rental law, but under the zoning, the PRC is.
Right, but, but there are certain zones that a rental can be achieved through an application for a rental permit, if it conforms to that zoning code for that particular district. I, I've been out of, out of the loop for a while, but I would have to look in the law. But I think in the rental law, there is something about certain districts are entitled to have that.
An accessory apartment.
Correct.
Yeah.
As a right.
Well, you'd need to apply, but, and, and you have to meet the conditions of the accessory apartment, so if it's a single-family use and you're looking for one additional dwelling unit, maybe that's the application.
But yeah, you have to maybe rethink your application.
But this already has a special exception for the, for the apartment.
Which apartment do you want to keep? Because you have two in addition to the single.
No, actually, it's a single-family home with a, with an apartment.
Right, but the basement is also living.
I think we're not gonna, yeah.
Who gave the exception, the town board?
We're gonna be speaking to the building department on how to deal.
We've gotta talk in.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're gonna, we're gonna be speaking to Brad on how to deal with the, the walkout area, right?
Right.
Because I understand what the issue is, that you can't have a basement apartment. We're not claiming that lower walkout area as a, as a separate apartment.
You're not seeking to legalize that as living space?
No, but obviously, you gotta be able to walk out, you've been, you've been to the property, right?
Yeah.
Okay. You've gotta be able to use it to get out.
How many kitchens are in the building, counselor?
How many kitchens now?
Not two.
There, there are two.
Okay, and did the building inspector inspect it?
The building inspector has been there.
And he walked through?
I believe he has, but I think there's gonna have to be, after this is, assuming this is approved, because I spoke to Dr. Brad about this, he's gonna have to come back, you know, and walk through again, and we're gonna have to comply with whatever, with whatever the town requires. By the way, there was some work, there was some work done, and there was some COs issued. For instance, there was a spiral staircase put in, that has a C of O, so it's not as if things have been done without, without, without permits.
But there was a three-family apartment at one time, in between 2001 and now, correct?
Apparently so.
So are you asking for a single-family house with an accessory apartment on basically re-establishing the prior use and then eliminating the basement living area?
Well, we have to speak to the building department, because you've gotta be able to at least get out through the basement.
Understand, I'm not suggesting that that's not possible, that's up to the building department.
Right.
But it's currently, from what I'm understanding, an apartment on its own, standing on its own. So you have three separate dwelling units in a single-family dwelling, so I guess what the question is, is, is what do you want to wind up with at the end of this process?
Okay, so I think what we wanna wind up at the end of the process is, because it was being very clear to me that you're not gonna get three apartments.
No.
Okay, first of all, it would have to be, it was pointed out, sprinkled, if it was, if it was, if it was three apartments.
Three, three floors, that's a building, building construction, building code requirement.
I guess it could be, I guess it's right to get out three apartments, I think, on two floors, if you have the, you know, at the lower level.
But even so, it would not be permitted under any of our zoning codes, three families not allowed anywhere in town.
That I understand.
Okay.
I understood that from the very, very beginning.
Okay, so you have to, you're gonna, your maximum potential is two.
Yeah.
So where do you want those? Above the first floor, or do you want to legalize the first floor and above as one residence and then legalize the basement as the other? I guess that's an important question.
I think, I mean, there's the first floor, and then there's the lower level, there's the first floor, and then there's the apartment.
Right.
Right? So the apartment is, is one, the first floor is two.
The basement is three.
And I think we have to, we have to work out with the building department how we deal with the, with that lower level, which has the walkout right to the back. I mean, it's, it exists, period.
Right, but when you owned it as a single fam, when it was built as a single-family residence, that wasn't necessary. You, you, you know, you'd go out your back door, you could, you know, that was your back door.
Correct.
It wasn't a residence, so per se.
So I think if you're asking me, I think it, it really should be tacked on to the, to the, the first floor. I mean, it, it logically, because the, the apartment is a, is a separate apartment.
So you're, so you're looking for an apartment on the first floor, an apartment on the second floor, I'm gonna say, great, on ground level, grade level apartment, apartment on the second floor.
Not a separate apartment, why can't that be part of the first floor? The grade.
Oh, you mean the basement?
Yeah.
You're looking for the basement and the first floor as one apartment, and the second floor as a second apartment.
You want a finished basement.
I mean, it really is now.
It's the second floor, it's not the third.
So I guess that's.
Yeah, not that, that, we're not.
Right.
It's not a play at all.
So. Well, I can get it. Actually, I'm just wondering if he even needs to do a special exception permit, because if he wants to make.
He has a break with Michael.
And have, as long as it's on or off.
Well, that we know.
Right, but that's the accessory apartment, right?
Well, it's better than having a single family.
Right.
But she would have to live there.
Yes.
It's better for the field, that's gonna.
I just wanna get to the town code for one second.
I don't think so. I don't probably have the determination. We still have something for it.
It's 105, accessory apartment.
It's a member there.
Yeah.
Really?
She has a T-shirt on, you have a wool jacket on.
I have a jacket. So under section 105, under chapter 105 dash- two gives you the opportunity for an accessory apartment application? And I guess we need to know whether you're applying for an accessory apartment or a two-family house.
My understanding is that the accessory, the accessory apartment scenario, the, the owner of the house has to live in the house.
That's correct.
That's why, that's why we're trying to shift it over to the two-family scenario, so that we're giving her the option of either living there or not living there.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna do what's the thing, I do.
Well, we'll, we'll look at the application in the code, and you guys can decide how you wanna handle it, what they've said.
All right. So while we're gonna adjourn you, well, first of all, if there's anywhere else to be heard on this mo, on this matter. Okay, so we're gonna adjourn you to the next meeting, and let's see if we can get a decision for you then. We'll do a little digging and- If there's any dialogue needed, let's, let's have it tweaked out with it. Absolutely. Okay. All right, we'll try and have a decision for you that-
I would review your applications very carefully, because she made the initial application and you did not. So I would look at the one she made and see if it's sufficient enough for us to grant you an appearance in whatever direction you're deciding to go, because what you're asking for has to be here in writing.
I guess we could clar, because, I guess we can, we can clarify the application.
Well, look at it, tell me. It's really that-
But I think it was, I think it was advertised correctly.
But you're asking for, I don't know how it was advertised, but it was, the way that's written, it says a single family to a two-family, correct?
It says a single family with non-conforming apartment, a two-family dwelling.
Okay, what section of the code would that be?
301-222B.
Okay. And is that the intent of what you want to lead for?
The, the intent is to, right now, it is, is to change one special exception to another.
I don't know what the special exception did for the, when the town board granted it prior, in 2003, is that what you said? Because I don't have that in front of me.
Has that been submitted as part of your application?
Was there, was there a resolution of the town board of the special exception?
I don't know.
I believe there was, if you want me to, to submit, there's a C of O, which I think is, is-
I'd rather have the special exception from the town board, 'cause that would be really a special permit.
Right.
So I wanna see the conditions of the special permit, because it may talk about, like, it can be no future conversions, no illegal conversions, it would, it would, it may just, from the record, take away that use, if there were any violations thereafter. So it would be, it would be advantageous to us to have a copy of that special-
What I'll do is I'll look behind, I'll, I'll look behind the C of O that we have for the, for the second floor apartment.
Right, how, how did that get there exactly?
Yeah.
'Cause you're claiming there was a special exception, which I believe it's a special permit.
That's a permit.
Right. If it's a special permit, it's from the town board. So the town board had a hearing, there were minutes, there were conditions, and there was a resolution. So I'd like to see those.
I know there was a, there was a resolution of the town board, I have to check what it was, that gave that jurisdiction to, to the zoning board. But I think, I think this was, I think this was the top, I will, I'll get all of you.
Exactly, thank you.
You're very welcome.
We'll see you on the 13th, right?
Twelve.
The 12th.
Oh.
12th of October? Yes. If that's not enough time to put this all together, I'll just, we'll just- We can take care of that, that's not a problem.
So you'll provide that information to our secretary, Emily?
Of course I will.
Thank you, and you'll forward that to us before we can make a decision?
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna apply the best information, probably the second floor apartment, right?
Yes, and how it got approved by-
It got approved.
Yeah, what happened was-
Because when we did a change in zone in 2004.
Here's what happened, it must have been, do you know what the prior zoning was, I'm gonna guess it was business D?
I think it was.
Or business D, rather. And so in 2002, the town board amended the zoning code to allow residential apartments with a minimum living space of 800 square feet as a special permit use. And this into, in June of 2002, shortly after this was done, they applied for that, and there at that time was an illegal three-family house there then.
Okay.
And then I guess in 2003, they cleared up the violations, and they were issued a CO for a single-family resident with a second-floor apartment. So apparently, they reinstalled the illegal apartment in the basement, 'cause that's where it was, according to these correspondence from the building department file.
Is that actually a separate, was a separate apartment? 'Cause it's not now, though.
Basement apartment is not permitted.
I know.
That's what it says in 2002.
Yeah.
So then they applied, and they were approved for a two-family, two, two, a single-family with an apartment, but the basement apartment was never permitted. So that was apparently reinstalled after this, because it's there now.
Why can't you, but my, my thinking was, not to, not to try and reinstall it as a separate apartment, but just have it be part of the first floor.
That's between you and the building department.
Right.
That's between you and the building department, but you are applying to switch one non-conforming use to another. Based on what I'm reading here, it looks like what you had was conforming before the illegal apartment was put back in. So you had a CO in 2003 for a conforming, a use that conformed to the zoning. So you had a conforming use, which would not lose its non-conformity unless it became a non-permitted use in the zoning district subsequent to this date, which I don't think it did. So now, now the question is, is are you just trying to re-establish what you had here? Because business D no longer exists. I don't know.
That means it's non-conforming, doesn't it?
No, because it, when you, it's not non-conforming, 'cause it's, it's, it's still a permitted use in the-
Single family still allows you-
Single family permitted use, but the, but the accessory apartment?
If you're lucky, that may be the only thing you're gonna get, based on what's in the code.
That's all I'm looking, all I'm looking for is the accessory apartment.
Well, but at that time, at that time-
I'm saying that I haven't had time to look at the code for that section.
The code said residential apartment unit, so at that time, owner occupancy wasn't required for that type of use.
For the accessory?
Yeah. Well, it wasn't considered accessory, it was considered basically an apartment and a residence.
And a single-family residence.
Yeah. What's your zoning, Conic River?
PRC, yeah.
PRC.
So you are currently non-conforming. Okay.
Yeah.
'Cause it's not, residence is not permitted in PRC.
Yeah.
What's that?
Residence is not a permitted use.
In PRC?
Retail shops, wholesale businesses, institutional offices, non-motorized open space, recreational uses, public parks, playgrounds, restaurants, picture production, special permit uses that of which this country owns.
And that was the basis for the request?
Okay.
All right, so we have some back and forth to do, but we'll, we'll see you at the next meeting, October 12th. Do your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully move appeal number 17-046 to October 12, 2017.
Second.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Woodmire.
Aye.
Mr. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And Ibrood, aye. See you on the 12th. Number 12? See you October 12th. Thank you. Good night now, take care. Okay, held over appeal number 52, Mr. McCarthy. Right here.
McCarthy management?
Okay, let's skip over the next one. Kim, you're on. Emily? Let me write that down right now.
He knows you're leaving. He just caught that.
That was the second time tonight.
Oh, I missed the first one.
Miss Emily, you'll always be Emily, trust me.
It feels like you're banning him, so he's back to Kim.
No wonder she's leaving.
You have to call it a Kim, that's why.
Okay, next we have appeal number 2017-055 for Andrea and Mark Comarchero of 270 Erick Lane, Jamesport, for variance is two and/or relief from the provisions of chapter 301, section 42, where the proposed rear addition has a side yard setback of 21.9 feet, where the minimum required is 30 feet, and from the provisions of chapter 301, section 34, where the proposed accessory rear deck slash pergola has a side yard setback of 17.1 feet, where the minimum required is 20 feet.
Do you have your mailings in your posting?
Yes, I do.
If you kindly bring those up. Miss Emily will take them. And you are attorney?
My name is Patricia O'Neil, I'm the architect.
Well, let's, then you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, and help me God.
I do.
Please state your name and your address.
Patricia O'Neil, architect, 257 Circle Drive, Menhasset, New York.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I've prepared just some illustrations for you, may I pass them to you?
You certainly may. Good day, Mrs. O'Neil.
Hi, um, just some information about me, I've been a licensed architect for almost 30 years, and I'm a member of the Long Island chapter of the American Institute of Architects. And I've been on both sides of, of your table. I served on the zoning board of appeals and the architectural review board in my village. I'm currently trustee in my village, and I'm currently the architectural consultant for the village of Old Brookville. And I understand the process of reviewing projects, and I'm very sensitive to towns and villages wanting to protect an aesthetic and a character and a scale of an established lovely neighborhood. I try not to be a frequent flyer at zoning board of appeals. I always try to solve design challenges within the law of the town of the village. And I know that granting of a variance from the zoning board of appeals is not just something that's handed out because you went through the process. And it's been my experience, that violation of the code that involves lot coverage, floor areas setbacks, sky exposure plane height, the sections of the code that controls mass and bulk and character must be very thoughtfully considered. And I'm here tonight to make an appeal after a lot of thoughtful consideration, planning, and collaboration with Mark and Andrea, my clients. We're here, I'm here tonight to request permission to expand the partial rear of a house with the single-story, seven-foot powder room, mudroom addition on the north side of the rear of the house, in a pergola structure on the, again, the south side of the house, on the, on the back of the house, towards the south side. The proposed structures are in line with the existing non-conforming setbacks of the house. What I've passed out to you are the floor plans of showing the proposed rear yard addition of that powder room, mudroom, and then the pergola, which is part of this covered porch, you know, backyard, outdoor living space that, that I've designed. And as you can see, the existing house has two existing side yard, two existing non-conforming side yard setbacks. The existing house has non-conforming side yards and minimum aggregate side yards. The existing, the existing side yard to the north is 21.9 feet, where 30 feet is required. The existing side yard to the south is 17.7 feet, where 30 feet's required for residential buildings. The minimum aggregate is 65, where 25.4 is provided. The proposed single-story addition, the powder room addition encroaches that side yard setback of 8.1 feet. The pergola, considered an accessory structure by definition, encroaches the 20-foot side yard setback by 2.9 feet. I respectfully request that you take the following five factors into consideration in making your determination. Factor number one is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting it to the areas. Again, we're just proposing expanding the rear of a, of an existing one-story house with a single-story addition that is in line with the existing house. The pergola is a single-story, open, open roof structure that, again, is in line with the existing house. It does not visually or physically impact surrounding neighbors or structures. These additions will not cast shadows or obstruct views. So the proposed addition in pergola will not be a detriment or a change in the character of the neighborhood. Factor number two is whether the benefits sought by Mark and Andrea can be achieved by some method which will be feasible for them to pursue, but would not require a variance. The existing house has non-conforming setbacks. To build within the allowable setbacks would limit construction to basically the centerline of the existing house. This would mean, you know, the views from the existing house out towards the back, which is really lovely, and you can see that from the photographs. You know, you'd limit those views, and then to, again, work within that, that footprint, we would have to make significant changes to the interior layout. Factor number three is whether the variance requested is substantial. I don't consider these substantial, we're asking permission to build within the existing setbacks of the house. Again, it's only a seven-foot addition, and that encroachment on the powder room is 8.1 feet. And again, we're not increasing the non-conformity that's, that's existing. Factor four is whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood. No trees are going to be removed for this construction, the existing grade will not change to accommodate the expansion. Patios are ungrade, any rain runoff from the new roofs and the patios will be directed to new drywells as part of the scope of the work. So we're not, you know, we're gonna be friendly neighbor, friendly neighborhood, we're not going to create an environmental impact. And factor five is whether an alleged difficulty is self-created, the, the house exists, the location of the new powder room, covered porch and the pergola, it just makes sense in our design. We work with these existing conditions- We work with these existing conditions and restrictions, and we did try to minimize, you know, the impact. The proposed design is sympathetic to the existing architecture and the character of the house, and, you know, my clients love, they love their home, they love living in Jamesport, property is beautiful, it's a nice family, they enjoy entertaining family and friends, and they wanna create, you know, this nice outdoor living space. So, and I think you can see from the photographs, you know, it's a lovely house, it's very neat, and I hope you can see from my drawings, both in plan and the exterior design elevations, you know, the minimum amount of the encroachment and sort of the minimum, the minimum additions to this house. So, in closing, I hope I showed you the process we went through in, in making a decision to make this application and appeal to you tonight for relief from the zoning code. Thank you.
Any board members have any questions?
No.
I do.
I think you can go ahead.
How many bedrooms are in the house?
How many bathrooms?
Bedrooms.
You know, I think it's a four, I think it's a three or four-bedroom house.
But you're not sure?
You know, I was hired to just do the work on the exterior, the, the, the powder, there is an existing powder room that we're removed, well, that we're enlarging. But I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, I don't have any...
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add that it is a minimal impact in size, and also that everything that's being proposed is in line with the existing house.
Yeah, we've all been there.
Yeah.
Well, just one thing I want you to be aware of, if, if the health department determines that it's more than four bedrooms, they may make you upgrade your septic system and your cesspools.
Understood.
I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you've covered all the bases, business-wise here.
Yeah.
Let's just see if there's anyone else out, anyone else to hear on this matter? Okay. It's your motion.
Thank you very much.
I move that the determination of Andrea and Mark Comarchero at 270 Harris Lane, Jamesport, for variances to and relief from provisions of Chapter three oh one, Section forty-two, where the proposed rear addition has a sideyard setback of twenty-one point nine feet, where the minimum required is thirty feet, and from the provisions of Chapter three oh one, Section thirty-four, where the proposed accessory rear deck pergola has a sideyard setback of seventeen point one feet, where the minimum required is twenty feet. Be granted in accordance with the application of sketches with amendments thereto, if any, filed with the building inspector. The written determination will be available with the town clerk within two weeks.
Second.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, your appeal's been granted, as you just heard, within two weeks we'll have the determination written out clear.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Take care, Ms. Emily.
Nice presentation. All right, Ms. Emily.
Next, we'll take up appeal number 2017 dash zero fifty-six for Cynthia Palumbo of 14 Beach Club Lane, Waiting River, for variances to and/or relief from the provisions of Chapter three oh one, Section two 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 E, where the proposed second-story addition increases the gross floor area within the required front, side, and rear yard setbacks, representing an increase in the degree of non-conformity of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling, where such increase is not permitted.
Thank you kindly, raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
And kindly state your name and your address, and who are you?
My name is Eric Bjornaby, I'm the architect with record, looking to do an extension here. My office is located at forty-two fifty Veteran Moore Highway in Holbrook, New York, one one seven four one. The name of the company is EAB Architectural Designs, P L L C.
You have the floor? Oh, you have your mailings? Yes, please, we'll take those.
Good evening to the board. I, I'm looking to do a project at this location, which is located in a Residence B eighty Zone, which has a minimum lot size requirement of eighty thousand square feet. The current size of the existing property is five thousand seven hundred and forty-seven square feet, so it's significantly small, the zoning just does not fit the property. We are seeking variances to put a second story over the existing first floor, one-and-a-half story building, on one portion of the, the structure, on the right side, which is also the south side of the building. It's a trapezoidal shape in the front, it's fourteen point nine, it's thirty-three point four along the side, and I don't have the exact dimension, because the survey doesn't give it to me, but we're approximating it to be four hundred and forty-seven square feet, approximately. The existing structure is fifteen hundred seventy-four square feet, and we're adding an additional four hundred and forty-seven square feet to be two thousand twenty-one square feet. We're not increasing any of the setbacks or any of the non-conformities that already exist on the slot, and we're looking to just make a, a little bit more comfortable space on the second story. We're not increasing any bedrooms, number of bedrooms, or anything along those lines on the interior. That's, that's pretty much it.
So, you're not increasing any more bedrooms?
No.
So, you're creating a little more living space downstairs, you're bringing bedrooms upstairs?
Right, there's extremely small bedrooms, so we wanna combine two existing bedrooms and then use this addition to make another larger bedroom.
The half, the half-story height as opposed to the two-story height, what's the difference? How much are you going?
We're not increasing the height at all. I don't know why it's called a one-and-a-half story, but when you walk into the structure, there's a clear story, the front of the house slopes from a one-story top plate on the front, slopes up pretty steep to the back, and then it's a full two-story on the back, almost like a cape with...
Oh, you have endormers, utilizing endormers?
Like an dormer, right, so I'm just, we're just putting...
So, the ridge line is not changing?
No.
Okay.
And that's pretty much it. Any other questions?
Okay, well, me, I...
I don't see any myself.
Well, you stated you're staying within the required front, rear, side setbacks, right?
You're staying with the existing?
With the existing.
Within the existing, correct.
And you're not increasing bedrooms?
We're not increasing the non-conformity, but...
And you're not increasing bedrooms?
Not one zone, not one setback meets the requirement, because it just, the zone, the house just does not fit the zoning.
Is that right?
Which, if I could just add, is very typical in this area, it's not like this is a small parcel in, you know, two acre property land.
Mm-hmm. All right. Is anyone else up there who'd like to be heard on this matter?
How was that, the determination of Cynthia Palumbo, 14 Beach Club Lane, Waiting River, for variances to and or relief from the provisions of Chapter three oh one, Section two twenty-two E, where the proposed second-story addition increases the gross floor area within the required front, side, and rear yard setbacks, representing an increase in the degree of non-conformity of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling, where such increase is not permitted. Be granted in accordance with the application of sketches with thereto, if any, is filed with the building inspector. The written determination will be available with the town clerk within two weeks.
Second.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Your appeal's been granted, but in about two weeks we'll have the determination.
Okay. Thank you. Good luck.
Sir, is there anything we can help you with, or are you just here for...
I'd say just move on.
He supports it.
You're supporting this?
Yes, sir.
You're a good neighbor.
We love to hear that.
Do we hear a motion for a separate minutes of the last meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Do we hear a motion to adjourn?
Do we need to adjourn appeals fifty-two, sir?
What's that? Oh, yes, ooh, thank you. Okay, let's...
Mr. Chairman, I move that appeal number seventeen dash fifty-two be adjourned till October 12th.
Second.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Now, do we hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen...
Was this...
You're very welcome.
Very interesting. Was it exciting?
It was exciting.
That was a thriller.
It was a thriller.
The architect was good. She was very smooth.
O'Neil?
O'Neil, yeah.
It was similar to the Hagler-Herns fight of eighty-five, right?
Thank you. God, we miss you, Frank.
For what?
Does your nameplate stand for it?
Did you, I mean, did you, did you, like, recently catch a rerun of that three-round fight between Hagler-Herns?